I'll just say, we'll start in about a minute, but if you would like to speak in our public participation, please be sure to fill out one of the forms that's on the podium and you can just hand it up to one of the aldermen here and we will be happy to recognize you. Si vinieran para comentar en el tiempo de comentario público, hay formas ahí en la plataforma que pueden poner su nombre y entregarlo a uno de los concejales para que les reconocemos. Going to call our meeting to order. This is our regular September 15th city council meeting. Let's stand and say a bunch of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably invisible with liberty and justice for all. With liberty and justice for all. So that is a pledge that we say every time and something that really means something. So our nation has not always provided liberty and justice for all, but it is, it is something that we strive for and that we are engaged in together. Some of you, many of you, I'm sure know, but today was a really rough day for our community. We had, we had woke up to phone calls that we had ICE activity in West Chicago. As far as we can tell, we had 15 residents that were taken away by ICE. This morning between 7:00 AM and 10:00 AM. So we are in a community in which there is a lot of fear, a lot of parents telling me their kids are having panic attacks, they're, you know, kids staying home from, from school. Our businesses are impacted. Some of our largest businesses actually closed down today and for safety reasons and for the fear that, that exists right now. So want to just acknowledge the fact that our Latino community right now is in crisis. Many of you can remember how you felt on nine 11 and that, that sense of just things don't feel secure. We don't know what's happening. Many of the kids in our community feel that way. They don't, they wonder if they're going to get home and their mom or dad or both will be gone. So just wanted to acknowledge that at the beginning of our meeting. You know, it happened in three different wards. It impacts a lot of different people and we expect that we'll, that it will continue to happen. We hope that it won't, but we expect that it probably will. So I want to say that my commitment is to protect all of the residents of our community to the best of my ability. And everyone who is part of this community, to everyone who is part of this community, I want to say that we consider you part of our community and we will work to the best of our abilities to protect you and take care of you. And everyone in West Chicago, everyone in West Chicago recognizes that our police are an invaluable part of our community. And it's also sort of a crisis in that respect as well, because there's all kinds of fears right now. And we're trying to do as good of a job as we can of saying, our West Chicago police are there to protect you. And that is their job is to protect our community. And they are not engaged in ICE enforcement activities, despite what the rumors on social media today say. ICE came and used our public restrooms at the police station. I don't know if that was on purpose or not, but lots of people got photos of ICE at our police station as they were using our public restrooms. That does not mean that we were working together with ICE to do enforcement of immigration, which is illegal in the state of Illinois. Thank you. With that, we will call the roll. If you would please, Ms. Messina.
Alderman Beebe.
Present.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Present.
Alderman Santiago.
Here.
Alderman Sheehan.
Here.
Alderman Halet.
Here.
Alderman Kretomunos.
Here.
Alderman Dimas.
Present.
Alderman Birch Ferguson. Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Swett.
Here.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto. Alderman Morano.
Here.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum and we are going to begin with our public participation. Have we received any forums at this point? Looked like I saw some people taking forums. Is there anyone that didn't get to turn it in yet?
Grabbing agendas.
Grabbing agendas. Thank you. Did you receive anything?
I have received nothing.
Okay, well, in the absence of any public comments, we will move on. We have a presentation on our general fund. As we said, in August, we would have kind of a series of these presentations in effort to be as transparent as possible about the city budget. And we talked about revenue in August. Tonight, we will talk about the general fund and this budget process is ongoing. But we are doing it in this way to get as much public participation and to give the council as much time as possible to absorb all the information so we can make good decisions. So with that, I will ask Ms. Messina to give us a presentation.
All right. So we're going to start this presentation off with our finance director, Nikki Giles. So just a little bit of context, and we've been working on this presentation basically right up until this meeting. And that's because in a budget process like what we're going through, the information is always changing. We're getting in new data. We're finding another opportunity for savings and we're making adjustments. So what this is intended to be for this stage in the budget process is just kind of a rough framework for you to understand where we are as far as potential expenditures just in our general fund for 2026 and where we are generally with the status of revenues in relation to that. So from that point, I'm going to pass this over to Nikki and she's going to give you some context.
Yes, thank you. Happy to be here to continue the discussion again tonight. I'm going to start off by briefly touching on revenue updates before we dive into the expenses. So with one more month of experience under our belts into the year, I would mention that telecommunications came in better than expected for August. We budgeted 35, we estimated 35K came in at 42, so fitting in the right direction. Our use tax, we estimated 20, came in at 23,000. Income tax was projected to come in around 225, actual ended up being 228. ComEd, our general fund liability tax was estimated at 120,000 and we came in at 141,000. So nice overage there. Sales tax, we estimated to receive 500,000 in August and September and we received a little more, a little bit over 40,000 each of those last two months, higher than projected. We will likely revise our 2025 year end projection as well as look at increasing the 2026 sales tax projections. Remember, sales tax is the category affected by the restructuring of the use tax. So our estimates were conservative. However, now that we're starting to get more actual data, we're more comfortable with revising some of those earlier estimates. We also received an additional 21,000 in grant funding and an additional 21,000, 20,000 in building permits revenue payments since I was here last. We received the first of our two property tax dispersments in September. And by the time we received the second dispersment at the end of the month, we'll, we'll be in a better position to verify for certain if we'll meet or will beat those property tax expectations. Okay, so for our 2025 projections, if we want to advance that slide, so what we're looking at is we stand here right now in front of you today is our estimated 2025 year and is looking to be about 22,287,501. The original 2025 budget being 23,649,600. So as, as it looks like right now, we could potentially be under budget a million dollars, 362,549. I think I touched on this earlier, as far as the general fund fund balance, as it stands right now, general fund funding loss surplus that exceeds 35% when we're wrapping up the audit, that's currently being moved to the community park fund. So as far as the 2026 economic context, as we've already discussed, the loss of the grocery tax, 425,000 ongoing loss, the red light cameras, we still have no estimated return to service date. So as it stands right now, we're looking at a projected loss of revenue of 1.452 million due to this state actions essentially is, is what that comes down to. So moving on, we have in the general fund, we have six different departments, not including city council operating, operations. We've got the city administrator's office, the new business and community relations department, and community development, finance, police, and public works. And then within each of those departments, we further break them down into divisions. So you can somewhat see the different divisions within the city administrator's office. You're going to find administration, you're going to find IT, human resources, GIS, special projects, business and community relations, that's going to be broken out into community engagement and communications and economic development. Community development is going to be our planning and engineering divisions and our building and code enforcement. My department, finance, I'm broken down into the accounting division and administrative, administration. Police has operations and ESDA, which is emergency services and disaster agency. And then public works, they've got municipal properties, administration, forestry, cemeteries, road and bridge, maintenance garage. So each one of those separate divisions, they're going to have their own budget with their own salaries, contractual commodities, capital outlay equipments. And as you might expect throughout the different divisions, some of them, you know, you'll continue to see the same or similar expense line items throughout, like we generally all have membership dues and subscriptions. We generally all have the training and tuition budget. We generally all have a miscellaneous expense account for things that just pretty much don't fit anywhere else. So I'll talk a little bit more about each of those categories, which we've lumped together, similar with revenues, like we have many, many different expenditure line items. So I could talk for a very long time about all of the different expense accounts within each, but we kind of condensed them for ease of understanding and for the presentation. So we're always going to have the salaries and wages. It's going to be the largest part of our division budget. And this is going to include not just salaries, but it's going to include overtime, it's going to include the city share of payroll taxes, FICA and Medicare, it's the pension expenses, health and dental insurance, that's a category in the human resources budget. But that also falls into that category and that's a pretty sizable amount. Going on to contractual, this is going to be your legal fees, legal notices, consultants, the training, membership dues that I mentioned. We all have our perspect, our respective professional affiliations. So for finance, that might be membership to the GFOA or the IGFOA. City council, you're going to find the expense related to the chamber and DuPage mayors and managers. Human resources, you're going to see IPELRA, GIS as a certification, administration has ILCMA, PV has IACP. Public Works has the American Public Works Association, APWA, and so on, so forth. And also included in this category, you may see some software charges or advertising, business and code, building and code enforcement expenses. This is where we budget for our mileage and our travel expenses, happier fees, postage machine rental. In the municipal properties budget, that's where you're going to find like your heating and electric, your ground maintenance, your janitorial expenses. In the forest three budget, you'll find the brush pickup expense, cemetery budget, you'll find our expenses related to the two cemeteries in town, internments, ground maintenance, the cemetery section, that's all about $90,000 combined. Still talking about public works, the maintenance garage, you're going to see something like line item you may not see in any other division, something like vehicle repair. So for 2025, so we budgeted for contractual 5,133, 500, 5,133,800. And what we're looking to come in at there for 22,500 is 4,548,343. And then you can see our proposed for 2026 is still less than what we budgeted in 2025 and just a little bit higher than what we think we're going to end up at in 2025. So let's see, I talked about commodities. So there we budgeted 860,700, expect to come in at about 734,000 and our proposed is just short of 900,000. A total capital outlay, we generally have two main categories in general fund capital outlay and that's going to be your vehicles and MIS, which is specific to IT. So those expenses related to our IT are going to be your computer parts, your computers, your parts, switches, battery backups, all things of that nature. And with the new addition of the business and community relations, they in their capital outlay, outlay equipment, capital outlay have also factored in things like downtown investment and downtown beautification. So whereas it used to be pretty much just vehicles and that MIS component, now we've expanded that a little bit. As far as the capital equipment replacement, so basically in the general fund, that's the PD, the police department, community development department, and two public works divisions contribute. So when you hear us talk about capital equipment replacement fund contributions and reducing that amount, this is what we're referring to. We're referring to the amount of money that each department will ultimately contribute to SURF, the capital equipment replacement fund, which funds the repair, the replacement, repair of vehicles and equipment. So for example, if the police department needs a new squad car, they're not buying that squad car out of their police department budget. They're bill, they're buying that out of the capital equipment replacement fund. And that money that's there is because, you know, they've been putting aside funds this entire time. So, so when you hear us talk about reducing that, that's exactly what we're talking about. So for capital outlay, we budgeted in 2025, 671,200. We estimating to come in about 615,000. And it looks like as it stands right now, we're posing just shy of 800,000 in 2026. And then, like I said, we've expanded that a little bit, not just to include the vehicles, but now we're looking at some of the business and community relations initiatives. So what that tells us is our fiscal year 2025 budget, we budgeted 23,353,500. We're anticipating to come in hopefully about 22,300,000 and then we propose just over 24,100,000 for 2026. It's a 3.24% increase of seven, increase of 750,000 from the 2025 budget to 2026. That's where we're standing as it looks like right now. So our general fund draft budget in 2024, when we were looking ahead to 2026, we projected about 23,585,700. Now that we're in 2025 and we're actually proposing 2026, we up that 524,000 to 24,110,461. So that's not balanced with the revenue projections that we're currently looking at. There's no buffer for economic downturn or state interference. There's limited expansion of services or new projects. There's no transfer to that community park fund and it includes the reduction to the capital equipment replacement fund at tune, it's reduced by 25%. So our SURF contributions are at 75% of what we originally projected. So talking about funded service requests, we have incorporated $100,000 for a business specialist for our new business and community relations department, $50,000 for the West Washington site consultant, $100,000 in website ADA related improvements and about 10,000 for translations. Looking forward to our unfunded requests, right now we're looking at records clerk, $94,000, social worker of 109, another assistant for the business and community relations, 75,000. FOIA software, Freedom of Information Act request, software at 111,000, survey platform 10,000, overtime and as it relates to parades, 6,000 for parade overtime and parade units, another $5,000. And for the soccer fields, we're looking at 125,000 right now, considering an unfunded request as we stand there right for you right now. Oh, sure. At any time, I think I was supposed to switch this over to Tia. So I apologize. You have to make bigger. Does anyone have any questions for me before I turn it over to Tia?
Thanks. I'm going back two slides.
Yes.
One more slide. So I know we went through the salaries and wages portion, but it looks like we're absorbing 1.4 million dollars in salaries and wages between this year and last year. Is there any like where anything that stands out that says like what the 1.4 million dollars?
I will tell you a big part of that because this includes the pension request too, is that we saw an increase in the least pension increase, an increase of almost 300,000. So that was a part of it. Off the top of my head, I'm happy to just double check that.
Yeah, interesting. It's a lot of money.
Now that you point that out, there very well may be a reason, it just escapes me at the moment, aside from the pension request, but I'm happy to double check it.
Yeah.
It's, I
That amount of money, I think it's worth.
Yeah, I don't have that level of detail in front of me right now.
That's great. If you can get back to us on that, because yeah, it's 8.5% increase.
Right. Anything else before I turn it over to Tia? Okay.
And just let me make one note that in trying to be transparent, we are inviting you guys in to see how the sausage is made. So please be aware of that and be patient with us that this is a process. And now that we get this specific data, it helps us to be able to make good decisions. So just, just so everybody knows, it is a dynamic process that is, that is, that is continuing to move, but we want you to be involved and aware of what we're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Yes.
One question. So you said we reduced the capital events fund, funding by 75%. How much?
25, yes.
Okay.
Each 25% decrease equals 184,000. What's in the fund right now, I don't have that information in front of me, but if we were to fund it at 75%, then it should last us through 2031. If we were to fund it at 50%, it would be expended before the end of 2028.
I think it's at like four mil, four million. Does that sound right?
See, I may need to back up a couple of slides because I, she probably has some more detail to add where I was just happy just to rewrite.
So before we go kind of into the PowerPoint slide structure of the presentation, I just want to give a little bit of background and a little bit of context of what our process the past week or so has looked like. So last week, we kind of put together all the submissions from all the departments and looked at what is this total out to. And as we were looking at that compared to our revenue estimates, we had a 1.1 million dollar deficit. So that's a big gap, but it also makes a lot of sense. Losing 1 million in red light fees and 425,000 in the grocery tax. So losing 1.425 million in revenue due to state of Illinois actions. It makes sense that our first run at the budget is going to be 1.1 million in the red. And that actually shows that some of the things that we were already doing to curb costs naturally and departments, making sure that their requests were lean and reasonable, already started us in a pretty good spot to start adapting from that first round of requests. Some of that was based on decisions that the council made. You may have heard us mention an early retirement incentive. And that's a program where we try to encourage people that are very close to being able to retire, to take that step out the door. And that usually results in some savings because the people that were able to replace them with usually have a little less experience and you can come in and cost a little bit less money. Also gives you the opportunity to take a look at those positions and see if they make sense in their current structure for the organization. Or if maybe there's some reclassification or shifting of responsibilities that we can do that can streamline operations. So we are able to at least include an initial estimate of a little bit of savings per year thanks to that program. We also were able to get at that one point, that that one point one million deficit because the first iteration of this general fund budget did not include a merit increase for employees. It does include at this stage a cost of living adjustment. So now that we've got one point one million in the red, we know we have to go back to the drawing table and figure out what we're going to do next. At that point, we did what I would call a standard alignment exercise. So that's going through and finding all those tiny little accounts and making sure that what we're requesting makes sense based on a combination of our expenditure history as well as specific knowledge that we have. So an example of that is, right now, we do not have a city administrator. You have your assistant city administrator functioning as interim city administrator. We're in the process of recruiting a new city administrator. Chances are, by the time that we get that person onboarded in twenty twenty six and they spend time getting to know the organization, they're not gonna have time to go to a lot of training activities in twenty twenty six. We're also choosing not to move ahead with our management fellow position, which is an internship position we had for a few years. So we can say we're not gonna be doing training for that person as well, which means I can tighten up that budget. So we did that kind of exercise through every single line of our budget of what do we know right now that we can use to tighten this up based on our previous projections?
And you should probably mention that you trimmed three hundred thousand from your.
Uh, yes. Uh, so there's a special projects fund that is used to account for things like environmental studies, things that come up that you don't know about, you can't reasonably anticipate. Things like um when we were going through the lake shore recycling process, the waste transportation discussions. We had to set aside some money on the possibility of, are there going to be costs that come up related to this that we have to account for somewhere? So that fund was running at about five hundred thousand dollars. And at this point, we've done reductions into that fund down to two hundred thousand. And so that's another space where we were tightening up our budget. Uh, some other examples of the tightening of budget that we would do is looking at items like we have eighteen thousand set aside for a blog. What would our budget look like if we didn't include that? Uh, we can also look at things like our I T purchases. This year, we had some really great purchases that came in under what we would have originally anticipated. Based on that, I have extra money in twenty twenty five. So one of the things that you can do when you have a tough budget year coming up is you can see if there are things that you were intending to buy next year that still fit within the categories of things that you're approved to buy this year and see if you can move that purchase up and use money that's already been collected. So through a combination of those actions, we went from one point one million to a reduced deficit of eight hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. And these are what I would call kind of the reasonable cuts. These are the low consequence, just a nice, good fiscal responsible, look at the budget. What do we need to be trimming up here and there? The next step that we did are what I would call the less reasonable cuts, the things that are gonna start stinging and that people are gonna be like, well, I don't want that to go away. I like that thing. I think that thing is important. Uh, so those kinds of cuts are reducing the capital equipment replacement funds, which I should note that these stinging cuts are currently reflected in what we're talking about with the budget. So those numbers that you've been seeing so far and hearing like uh Capital Equipment Replacement Fund at seventy five percent, those numbers are with the stinging cuts included. So Capital Equipment Replacement Fund, hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. It keeps it at least funded through twenty thirty one. Aside from that, we start looking into our support for outside groups. So you may or may not know, but on a normal year, the city contributes between thirty to forty thousand dollars to Healthy West Chicago. What would our budget look like if we didn't do that? We had in our budget initially sixteen thousand five hundred to continue Mexican Independence Day next year. We could pull back on some of the new service expansions that we were looking forward to do. Things like an engagement platform that would allow residents to have a much stronger direct say into what we're doing. We can pull back the parade that we were hoping to reinstitute and advertising. And so as those things start to come together, we find ourselves at five hundred and sixty thousand dollars about in the red. So still pretty significant red budget. From there, we can put together additional cuts, but these are the cuts that I would generally consider, things that I wouldn't recommend. Things that would take away from our community identity. They would take away from our forward momentum. They would take away from us being able to really strive and move forward. And the kinds of things that would be in there might sound a little boring at first on a couple of them. Uh, one of them would be thirty thousand for code modernization consultant. And that sounds like just a bunch of gibberish. But as an organization, we recognize that there are segments of our code that are out of date, that no longer serve the current vision of our community, that can be hard for a business or a resident to understand. That's something that we've recognized for at least the past ten years. And we've also said, we have the ability with the skills in our staff that we'll, we'll get around to it. We'll get it updated. I can tell you, ten years and the amount of staff time that's actually been available to make those kinds of updates is limited. There's always some other thing that has to take priority. You can look at things like an economic development market and housing analysis, and that one sounds pretty boring, but we're hearing from a lot of the community, as the mayor has attested going door to door, that the community wants to see us really reinvigorate our local economy and bring businesses to the downtown. And we've tried, won't approach that, and now we're looking to get some help and some analysis and data to help us be more successful and really show the community some very strong progress forward. You have something like Railroad Days, which is about ninety seven thousand dollars. The city regularly puts forward support to Gallery Two Hundred of six thousand dollars. Twenty four thousand to do page senior services to provide meals for seniors. Nine thousand towards the summer series at the show. At this point, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars would be the cost to do a cost of living adjustment for non-union employees. The employees that are over under a union contract, a pay increase for them is protected. For non-union employees, that's what it would cost to give them a cost of living adjustment. A cut of that nature would bring us closer to balancing a budget. Twenty thousand dollars for cultural markets in our downtown. This is an exciting new initiative that our staff had brought forward. The idea was to take something along the lines of a farmer's market and bring that to our downtown, but make it fit for West Chicago. So not the same things you're gonna see in a St. Charles or a Geneva, but a cultural market that brings in vendors that are from our local community and that support the desires and the interests of our local community. Be twelve separate occasions, so that's twelve separate events that we would bring people to half foot traffic in the downtown and not only support this market, but support the businesses downtown. We could cut the capital of the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund by another twenty five percent, which is another hundred and eighty four thousand, which means that fund would expire sometime in twenty twenty eight. And then we would be left having to figure out how to maintain, replace, and account for all the equipment that all departments are using. And there are other support programs such as crossing carts at thirty six thousand. Now, none of these are cuts that we're saying makes sense to move forward with right now. But as we're working through the weekend, trying to figure out how do we get that one point one million deficit down to zero, these are the kind of numbers that are coming up once you get through the reasonable low stinging cuts. So we talked a lot about cuts. Currently, even with those cuts, these are a few things that would still be included in the general fund that would be exciting and new and positive. So we've heard that desire for support on the economic development front and business specialist. That position is currently in the draft of the budget that we have right now. Fifty thousand for the West Washington Site Consultant, so that's a very large chunk of land that we need to understand what we could do with that in the future so that we can start putting plans together to use that as an area of economic revitalization. Uh, our current website, I think many of you probably experienced challenges with it. It's a little bit Frankenstein together, a little bit piecemeal. But we also have a new obligation in April twenty twenty seven to meet a much higher level of ADA accessibility standards on our website. And we do not believe that this current structure would do well to be modified to meet those standards and that we may be in a better position to start from scratch and also give the community a website that's more usable and more engaging. And then just a slight increase in our translation budget to account for these meetings and the increased engagement so that we can have our meetings recorded and online and available in English as well as closed captioning and Spanish subtitles so that we can uh continue with some positive engagement. So some of the other things that have been talked about in the earlier stages of this budget process that are not currently funded in this iteration of the budget would be the Records Clerk at ninety four thousand. You may remember that that position came up as important because the level of FOIAs that we're getting particularly related to police body cam footage, each request can take somewhere around two to four hours to process. And at this stage, we're getting so many requests that it's the staff are struggling to keep up and we have a legal obligation to appropriately respond to these FOIAs within a specific timeframe. There was discussion about expanding social services, so you would see a social worker. Administrative support, seventy five thousand. Alternatively, to a Records Clerk, we could look at a FOIA software that uses A I to assist with redactions. There was that survey engagement platform at ten thousand, and then we kind of talked through overtime related parade, parade units. And then the potential of the footsaw, football slash soccer.
Footsaw.
Footsaw.
Let's be clear.
Uh, so just a little context on the personnel aspect. We can estimate right now sixty thousand in savings in fiscal year twenty twenty six because of that early retirement incentive program. Seventy four thousand in savings to the general fund by not doing a merit increase. We did some reclassification of some positions in the Business and Community Relations Department, and that could get us about twenty two thousand. We chose not to move ahead with the intern position, so that's about fifty three thousand in savings. And we're not doing public work seasonal help, so that's about forty two thousand there. I mentioned that we did some tightening up in some of the various budgets. So across all of the training budgets across the entire organization, we're looking at about twenty two thousand six hundred. We can reduce our court reporter fees thanks to these lovely little owl devices. That creates a little opportunity for streamlining of services. I've talked about eighteen thousand for the blog, thirty thousand and I T savings by just shifting some things around, and we've also done a good job the past two or three years in just improving technology for the organization so we can take a year or two off. Uh, office supplies and postage, nine thousand three hundred, nine thousand and miscellaneous and other charges. And then we already talked about the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund. So external support, we talked about a little bit verbally, forty thousand Healthy West Chicago, sixteen thousand five hundred Mexican Independence Day, five thousand for the parade. And then the other potential cuts, which are not things that I'm recommending, but things that would have to be part of the conversation if we're trying to get from one point one million deficit down to no deficit. So after going through that part of the conversation, the other aspect that we have had as conversations through this budget season so far have been potential revenues. And I expect many of you have been at multiple meetings where the various revenues have been discussed. So I'm just gonna do a quick refresher on those if that's okay with everyone. So one of the potential revenues is a grocery tax, which we can estimate would be four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. That would go a nice way if we did the pretty heavy duty a, a combination of some heavy duty cuts and a grocery tax. We could probably get to balance, but we wouldn't see much for new initiatives or some of the positive things that we were hoping to move forward with. And uh, it's been adopted so far by five hundred and thirty nine communities across the state of Illinois. But it's got some challenges. It does target necessities like food. SNAP recipients are exempted, but if someone for some reason or another can't get SNAP, then they don't get that exemption. The other common option that we had talked about in previous sessions was the Home Roll Sales Tax, which is estimated at about one point two million. That would provide a nice chunk of additional revenue. It would put us at a taxing rate higher than the general taxing rate of many of our peers. It includes some of the, some necessities as well, like diapers, but it also includes luxury goods and does not apply to titled assets. If we wanted to go ahead with either of those revenue options, we would have to make a decision, have that postmarked before October first so that we could collect them in their full amount in twenty twenty six and have the full value of the budget impact. Some of the other ones that we talked about were kind of ideas that we were throwing at the wall. So the idea of creating a tax for commercial outdoor storage, parking or commercial trucks. Uh, an additional option could be increasing the diesel motor fuel tax six cents per gallon that would target truck traffic, which does have a significant effect on our roads. That would be estimated to bring in three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. So this is just kind of a rough experience, very much of how the sausage is made. So you're seeing this information basically as we've been getting it as staff and as we've sat at the table and tried to throw ideas at the wall, what would work, what would bring us to balance? How much is it worth to sacrifice through cuts versus how many opportunities are lost if you rely entirely on cuts? So at this point, I'm happy to take some questions from the council with the understanding that chances are there's gonna be a lot of this that we'll have to come back with another update. Alderman Davis.
Uh, yeah, I just, um, for our conversation earlier, I just wanted to uh, say that moving forward with the um grocery tax, at least getting it in for the deadline, but not necessarily implementing it is a possibility, is it? Just so everybody's aware of that.
So there's a couple prongs of aspect to that. From the perspective of the Illinois Department of Revenue, they will not start implementing the tax unless it's received by October first for us to get that full four hundred and twenty five thousand. If, let's say, we didn't make that October first deadline and we sent it to them in November or in January or March, then they would start collecting in July. So it would be probably about half of that four hundred and twenty five thousand. Now, for the next year and the year after that, we would be at the full amount. So it's something that we could go that potential route of approving it and then staff would be dependent on direction from the council whether or not to submit it. And depending on when submitted would affect how much revenue we would be able to capture.
Yeah, let's go. Uh, I think Alderman Myers will go.
Is there, is there any paths to be surplus this year and next year?
That was my question. And, and actually, is Nikki still available?
Yeah, she's fine.
Thank you. I, 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 Alderman Myers, my brain was working the same direction in my, my, my question, and ag- again, if you don't have the answers to this immediately, no problem. But my, just kind of, you know, thick and scratches here. It, it looks like we're projecting about a one point four million dollar surplus for this year, if I'm not mistaken.
Was it one point four or is it one point two?
Well, it was a one point one.
I had one point four three, but I could be wrong.
Your updated numbers are closer to the one point one. You were using the ones from our last.
From the last, yeah, okay. So what, let's say one point two, let's be conservative.
It's the same answer.
Yeah.
So regardless of the dollar amount, any excess um, of revenue over expenditures at the end of the year is going to roll over into our fund balance.
So it, it, it would roll, roll over into our fund balance and, and the, if I, if I understand the process correctly, uh, we would take any of that surplus and, 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 and put it towards our reserve fund of thirty five percent of our
Yes.
of our annual budget. And then the excess above that currently would go to the Community Park Fund.
Correct.
And is that by ordinance or is that by tradition?
That is per our budget policy, which we updated that budget policy in September of twenty twenty three to include that specific provision about moving the excess to Community Park. So that can be undone. It can be reversed. I contacted Ansel Gluck and verified that it would be immediate if that is the council's intent.
It can be reversed. I contacted Ansel Glick and verified that it would be immediate if that is the council's intent. So it would not necessarily mean we are wed to transfer any excess in twenty twenty-five.
And if we did decide to move that route, would that require a change by ordinance? Or would that, if that's just budgetary policy, would that just be the council gives direction?
Was the policy established by the council?
Yes.
Yeah, so the council got to go around that.
Yeah, okay. So, just, that is a, that is a possibility. And it wouldn't have to be the entirety of it, but that, some portion of that could be used as sort of, sort of a bridge for this year. Now, I, I understand that some of the things that we're looking at are recurring things that, you know, this would not be necessarily a long-term solution.
Exactly. It is much more of a short-term solution.
But is something to at least
What you consider?
Consider. Ms. Moreno.
So, I mean, but if we did do it in its entirety, it would basically bridge the whole gap, right?
Yes, it could.
And then going back to the sales tax question.
Yeah.
If that's okay, if I could show. Um, I, I know you mentioned that there were, that would be higher than some communities at the eight point seven five. Are there any communities that are at the eight point seven five rate that are in DuPage County or higher than that, I guess is the better question.
So, one of the items that we haven't had the chance to look into the exact details on, but we're generally aware of, is that while that would put us at the top end, as far as we're aware in DuPage County for the overall rate, there are some communities that have specific business areas that they have specific taxes applied. An easy one that most of us in this room have probably thought about is the Woodfield Mall tax. So, there's an extra sales tax on the purchases that occur at the Woodfield Mall. And some of the other communities in DuPage County have some business areas where there might be an extra tax on top of what we would typically think of a sales tax. It is not something that staff has had the time or the opportunity to look into, to find some examples for comparison on. Something that we've only just kind of had an internal discussion recognizing that it's a factor for us to look into as we continue through this process.
I, I did find four or five examples and I'm digging for it.
Yeah, so just to clarify my question, outside of like the one-offs of like a certain area that has a certain tax within the city, um, the actual city sales tax, but it goes at eight point seven five, would that put us at the top of DuPage County?
My, my, my answer is that it would put us on the high end, but it would not put us at the top. That, I, I, I believe there are, uh, there are ones that are higher, but it's very difficult to compare. It's not apples to apples. Because for instance, Naperville has three different districts. And so it's very difficult to make a comparison when, when we have one district and they have three. But, um, I'll try to get it to you later, but I did find four or five examples in DuPage County that would still be higher.
Four or five is a little rough and there's thirty-two communities. So that, that would really put us at the, really at the top.
At, at the higher, but on the other hand, Alderman Moreno, I didn't look at all thirty-two. Yes, Alderman Davis.
Uh, yes. Uh, so, uh, another question I had was, um, knowing that we are, is a community facing these cuts from the state, other communities around us are doing that as well. And so, um, I guess, and that you probably wouldn't even know this, but we foresee them increasing their taxes as well because of these cuts, I would assume. So, I'm not, I'm not saying that that eight point seven five is going to remain as the, near the top when other communities around us are going to need to start figuring out how to pay for these cuts as well. So, I guess that's just my, that's not really a question, but just a statement.
Well, I, I think part of it is that with the grocery tax, since the state is eliminating the state portion, they gave the municipalities to the ability to collect that portion itself, thinking that the net impact on taxpayers would be zero, which is why so many municipalities are picking that up. So, that's another factor in it.
Although, I, I think the intent of it was that there would be some, the minimal benefit to the, uh, to the most vulnerable parts of the of, of the population if the cities did not go, turn around and, and, and put it back on. And the fact that four hundred and seventy-five or was, uh,
Five hundred and thirty-nine municipalities have now approved the grocery tax.
I mean, that is, that is definitely the easy, the easy answer. I mean, that's, that's the way most of them are going. And I've said this before, but my, my primary opposition to that was just because it was on the more, more vulnerable population. Yes.
Uh, just another question then, uh, along with that grocery tax, we're
Thank you, Ms. Jess.
We're still in a deficit, um, no matter what. And I, I, from what I foresee, mostly that was from the red light uh, cameras that we've lost as an income. Um, and we don't foresee those coming back on anytime soon. If and when they do come back on, if, that's a big if, I'm assuming that, um, is there ways then we could reduce taxes there? Is, is that a possibility? I mean, I, I foresee that as another option down the road is there's something that if we do go ahead and move forward with increasing taxes, we get that red light revenue back, we could decrease that.
Yes.
On the other hand, that's why, or that could be a point for the option of a short-term um, solution of taking our one point two, whatever it is, surplus from this year. And just hypothetically, I'm just, I'm throwing round numbers out there. But if we were to take phase one of the cuts or I forgot what the nomenclature was, but, uh, that, the, the, the easier cuts that brought us down to an eight hundred thousand deficit, let's say. And then if we were to, um, take eight hundred thousand from this year's surplus and put it towards twenty-six, that would be one way of skinning the cat. Alderman Moreno and then.
Yep. So, I, I do like the idea of that. I, I mean, in theory, again, dealing with IDA, I think we've all had different situations with them. Things can take a little while or longer than we'd all like. Um, I'm sure she's very fair as to that. Um, but the, the reality is it probably will as well. But, uh, that said, um, uh, i- if we can move those funds over into, to next year, I would like to believe that by twenty twenty-seven, those red light cameras are backed up and running, um, in order to fill that void.
One would think.
Um, and, yeah, again, it maybe won't fill the gap entirely. Um, but I think it'd put us a lot closer and maybe make, um, this a much easier conversation than trying to figure out how to find one point four million dollars in tax or approval from the services.
And one of the points that's been raised in the past in, in this body is it's once taxes are in place, it tends to become very difficult to remove them. And if we can not go that route, even for a year, that is a, that is a, um, that is something that would be desirable in my mind as, as Alderman Moreno said, we would anticipate. But certainly sixteen months from now, and, you know, any of us that have, uh, contacts in Springfield, maybe we can, uh, you know, put some pressure on IDOT to, to, to get those things back up and running because it's basically just, I mean, they could. But, uh, Alderman Howlett.
In regards to taking the money from the surplus in that budget, the question is, how about the following year? If things don't go the way we want, where are we at from that point? And I'm usually an optimist, but I also have a little bit of pessimism in me at times because so often we can count on something and it doesn't pan out. So then what do we do from that point? Then we will be in a position where as much as we don't want, we'd have to make a lot of these cuts for the time being until things start rising back up again. So, whatever the decision we make, I still feel a little bit nervous on that idea. So, that's, that's my point. I'm, I'm just, I think we need to be very careful with, when we have money like that. We're saying, well, let's just grab it, put it here for now and hope it rains out of the sky somewhere or something else. And I don't mean that being, to be insulting either.
Alderman Moreno.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think the, the thought behind it would be is that, again, as we mentioned, that, uh, we, we'd have some more things in place, right? We would have the red light cameras that are writing the X amount of hours. We, we could, you know, have longer times to maybe take a little of the budget, make the adjustments that we need to, or to on twenty-seven. All those things that, that could potentially happen. And if all else fails, I mean, the reality is if we don't comply with sales tax this year, it's still on the table for next year or a year, or if it is needed. As opposed to going all in on taxing everyone now with the opportunity for us to not have to do that and potentially never actively. I, I guess I just like the idea of that better.
So, um, just, uh, to keep in mind, uh, and, and I, I do see Alderman Avina Soto, and do we need to reflect in the record that he is now present?
Uh, yes, that's great. I did actually see you come in. Do you have an estimate of when you came in?
Stuck in there without anybody seeing. Uh, ju- just to kind of recall for tonight, the probably, we are not, we're not adopting a budget tonight. Although, we are in, putting in place kind of the, the, the basic framework of the discussion. But the thing that we do need to decide on tonight is if we are going to put in place, uh, either a sales tax or a grocery tax, which would be implemented on January first. So that's the thing that we will have to decide on. The rest is good discussion, but will not be a decision that we make tonight. Alderman Avina Soto.
Those percentage like are getting collected from taxes, has to stay, have stayed that way? Does you have to say like one percent? And we reduce like, why not? Instead of like just choosing one or the other, like we reduce to half the percentage of what I'd be already is and we can implement both.
So, my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but is with the sales tax, it does have to be in quarter percent increments. And so we are looking at the minimum um, increase of one quarter of a percent.
Is it the same thing for the grocery taxes? It has to be, be increments of one percent?
In the grocery tax, uh, Ms. Bassino or, uh, Ms. Giles, I don't know if, uh, if it's quarter percent in the same way or, uh, I don't know if you know that off the top of your head.
And we do cut percentage one five.
I have only heard the grocery tax referred to in a percent. Although I'm happy to confirm if a quarter percent or half a percent or three quarters of a percent. Um, to date, all the conversations I've had or I've been a part of have all been specific to the one percent that was enacted by Ritzker when he eliminated the one percent of the state level.
Just for perspective though, uh, the quarter percent of the sales tax is three hundred thousand dollars. Whereas the quarter percent of the grocery tax would be a hundred and, you know, twelve thousand dollars or something. So, it's, it would be, it would be a much smaller Thank you, Ms. Giles.
You're welcome.
Uh, um, someone over here, Alderman Santiago.
Um, so as far as the we're talking the, the one point two, right?
One point two million, oh, the deficit.
Right. So, one of the amounts that was thrown out was basically come, bringing down to eight hundred thousand. Right? So if we bring it down to eight hundred thousand, we've already made some cuts, right? We're already structured. And if we were to borrow the eight hundred thousand from the surplus from this year, right?
Yeah.
Um, and we could actually learn to survive this year with that budget. Keeping those cuts in place would probably make us a little bit stronger, right? That, that we don't, that's something that we didn't really need. And we can probably all benefit from that. Um, and then if we are, if we happen to put into a surplus next year, we could put those charges back on the table. So, I, I guess really my point is we're coming to find out things that we probably don't need. They're, they're somewhat nice to have right now. Um, but I think in tight times, you know, right now, hard times, we, we need to go ahead and pinch every penny we can in order to go ahead and, one, balance the budget and without going to the tax thing.
I, I, thank you. I, I wanted to, um, respond and, and also some responses to Alderman Howlett and then we'll go back to you because I believe you had a, another comment that you wanted to make.
Very small comment.
Oh, go ahead then. Yeah.
Uh, but we keep saying if, if.
Yeah.
And it's a two-letter word. And then I mean, and I, but that, that's why I said that's the pessimistic side of me and the if, because it could just become an if more and more and never get in there. So that's
And that's
have to be cautious with.
That, that's kind of the thing I wanted to respond to because I do think that it's instructive to keep in mind that we're not talking about borrowing money. I mean, that, that term was thrown around. If this was a household budget, we'd call it saving money. We saved money this year for next year. And, um, and so we're not talking about, uh, okay, we're going to go out and get a credit card and spend this with the hopes that something is going to come in next year so that we can pay for it. We're saying, okay, we saved this money this year and then we are using it for next year. I think that is actually potentially a responsible thing to do, not an irresponsible thing like going out and just, you know, borrowing on credit in the hopes that some, that money will fall from the sky, right? Um, and, and the, the other thing that, that I wanted to mention just again, not for a decision tonight, but so that we're looking at the whole picture is, um, uh, Alderman, Vivian Alderman, Myers and I, uh, had a first meeting to talk about the direction for the um, for our new commission. They, they're the two members that we appointed to the downtown revitalization commission. And I, I hope I'm not speaking out of class here, but, uh, I, I, whatever that expression is, uh, it, we, we talked about the possibility, we talked about the community park fund and the possibility of redirecting some of the surplus from this year from the community park towards the downtown revitalization to reflect a reprioritization of that money. Now, I do not think we should abandon the community park. I think that we have made promises that we need to fulfill. But I do think that is legitimate to look at it as a multi-step process. We have four million dollars currently in that fund. Uh, I had a really good meeting this last week. Um, uh, we did with, uh, Mahul and with, um, yeah, there's two people that have been working on the Kermagie site. Um, one with Weston Solutions, which is the contractor that was assigned the cleanup and the other with the I E P A. One of them's been there since ninety-seven, that's DPOC, and then the E I P A, I E P A guy since ninety-three. And so, um, got a really good review from them on, on everything that's going on and, and where that's going to go in the next year. And spoiler alert, we're going to have another open house like we did for the West Washington Street site over there so that people can come and ask the experts their questions and hear at, you know, kind of demystify our, what we don't want to be, uh, Area Fifty-One over there. So, uh, uh, that said, we will probably be taking possession of that site at the very end of twenty twenty-six. Nothing happening in twenty twenty-six. At this point, we already have four million dollars plus, um, grant money of another two million, so six million. So, we could with six million dollars take a significant, um, first step at the community park. And if under the scenario that we're talking about, if we took eight hundred thousand from the surplus from this year uh, and put it towards meeting the, um, meeting the, uh, Meeting the uh uh the the projected deficit from twenty twenty six. Um we could also take. The remaining four hundred thousand. And put it. Towards a some sort of seed fund for the downtown revitalization. I would love to think that at some point we could sell some of our property. And start using that as a revolving loan fund for small businesses and for incubator sites. And I did want to just mention that, like. Alderman Santiago said, you know, when times are tight, you got to pinch every penny. I agree with that, except as a business, you also have to like be very strategic in that because you can. Do things which will sacrifice your future. By. You know, saying, okay, we're not going to do any advertising and then we don't have any new business and then we don't don't have increasing revenue sales. I think one of our largest areas for potential growth is in the downtown where right now. You know, my informal survey on a Thursday at two P M. We had sixty seven percent of the doors locked. And if the downtown can be revitalized, be brought back to life. There's significant re- revenues that come from that. And so if we, if if. From my perspective, it does make sense to strategically say, okay, we are going to continue to spend money because. There are strategic areas where for the sake of our future growth. We need to do that. So that's that's the, I'm not disagreeing with what you said, but just the the, you know, the balancing point. And that's our job is to kind of figure out. The priorities and where the balance is. Alderman Hallit.
I agree with you, spend money, but spend money carefully.
Agreed. So where are we? We um had some good discussion. Um and we are possibly going to take some action. Uh.
And this bit on the minutes, can I request that we make a, I'm looking at table. I have. A lot of changes and I would like to just clean it up before we bring it back.
Yes, um. Uh what would you? What are you thinking?
Um well, so the open meetings I said says that we have to approve. Meeting minutes within two meetings of when they occurred, and I just have a lot of. Changes that I can just talk through with Tia and bring them back there. For example, on several of the motions, it's just said. Um Alderman made a motion, but it doesn't say what the motion was to do. So instead of just cleaning that all now. If I could just do it offline with Tia and we could bring them back in the next meeting. So if someone can make a motion available, we could just remove this.
Alderman Bibi.
They can move the table.
Which number are you?
I need to get back to that.
Five?
Five of five.
Okay. All right. Um. Do we have a second? Alderman. Who was that?
Yeah.
Either of you.
Either one, yeah.
Um. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed?
Does that refer to?
Do we got to do a report for table?
No, that's a question.
Point of this. Okay, um. Presentation finish?
Presentation is done. Thank you all.
Good to make sure.
Working with us as we. Go through the new process.
So item number six is um discussion, possible action to approve corporate disbursement report. Alderman Demas.
Yes, Your Honor, I would uh. Make a motion to approve the September fifteenth, twenty twenty five uh corporate disbursement report in the amount of. One million, one hundred forty one thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars and seventy one cents.
Okay, we have a second. Alderman South. Um. Let's call a roll.
All right, Alderman Demas.
I.
Alderman Stout.
I.
Alderman Bibi.
I.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
I.
Alderman Santiago.
Noon.
Alderman Sheen.
Hi.
Alderman Hallit.
Hi.
Alderman Tretum Munos.
Hi.
Alderman Smith.
Hi.
Alderman Switek.
Hi.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Nate.
Alderman Marano.
Hi.
Alderman Myers.
Hi.
Okay, it's approved. Alderman Soto. You don't have to, but do you want to tell us what you didn't approve of?
Uh I sent some kind of um. Budget going over. The budget, some projects going over the budget.
Okay.
So I'm. Not really.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So noted. Um. We are uh moving on to. Item seven, the reading of the proposed consent. Agenda. Um we're going to begin with the. Uh. We're establishing our consent agenda. Which we will. Do once we read it. Right? Development Committee.
Yes, we got. Well, five ideas this evening. Uh seven A, ordinance number twenty five R. Zero zero three four, and ordinance granting an amendment to the special use permit for outside storage ancillary to a permitted. Permitted at eight hundred West Washington Street. Item seven B, ordinance number twenty five R. Zero zero three six, and ordinance adopting an amendment to the future of land use there. Item seven C, in ordinance number twenty five O zero zero four zero. In ordinance granting zoning variances to eight of eighteen hundred twenty West Roosevelt Row. Item seven D, ordinance number twenty five O zero zero. Four one. Nordest amending the code of ordinances of City of West Chicago, appendix N X A. And zoning code article four and article eleven relating to indoor sports facilities. Finally, seven B, ordinance number twenty five O zero zero four two. In ordinance granting a special use permit for an indoor sports facility at eight forty or three forty eight. Power score.
Okay. Um and I believe we are now going to read the. Infrastructure. Committee. Yep, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two items. We have um item seven approved. We have all this received for the water treatment filter number one rehabilitation project. This bid, um it it's it's very niche things that we are looking to get out of it. We only received one um. Uh responsible this for this item and came in pretty significantly over our projected asking of it. I'm getting better. Go back to the drawing board and kind of look at it differently. This particular. Um we also have item seven G. Resolution number twenty five R zero zero six three, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with MG, the camp for contracting LLC of Woodstock, Illinois. For the water treatment plant rooftop unit replacement project for a mountain to see.
Okay, thank you. Um we now have. Um. What do we have? Public Affairs, thank you.
Yes, Your Honor, we have two items. Um. Seven H, approved of West Chicago Fire District's open house scheduled for Saturday, September twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. From eleven A M. to two P M. And I ordinance number twenty five O zero zero four three, in ordinance amending the code of ordinances. Of the City of West Chicago, chapter two, article six, division thirteen regarding the Cultural Arts Commission.
Thank you. Thank you, Smith. Um items not sent to committee. I guess I get to read that. Jay. Resolution number twenty five R zero zero six five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a downtown investment program grant. Agreement with Jose Oscar Munoz at one sixteen uh Main Street. Uh otherwise uh known as the property that had the Happy Family. Um restaurant, Good Morning Family Restaurant, just to identify it. So we're we're very excited to have somebody utilizing that program. And that concludes. The reading of the proposed consent agenda. Um. Uh is there anything you'd like to take off? Alderman Bibi.
I'd like to take seven eight off.
Okay. Anyone else? Mark? Yes, Alderman Marano.
Just for discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
Seven J.
Jake?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to establish the consent agenda. As written minus A and J. Alderman Myers.
So moved.
Second. Alderman Smith. Um. Call a roll.
Alderman Myers.
Hi.
Alderman Smith.
Hi.
Alderman Bibi.
Hi.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Hi.
Alderman Santiago.
Hi.
Alderman Sheen.
Hi.
Alderman Hallit.
Hi.
Alderman Pareto Munos.
Hi.
Alderman Demas.
Hi.
Alderman Switek.
Hi.
Alderman Stout.
Hi.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Hi.
Alderman Marano.
Hi.
Okay. Um so we have established the consent agenda. Um let's uh. Uh uh take item A. Uh. No, now we're, yes, we're going to vote on the our consent agenda and then we'll take our, thank you. Uh I would entertain a motion to. Um. Approve the items on the. Establish consent agenda. Alderman South, so. Second. Alderman Garcia. Let's call the roll.
Alderman Stout.
Hi.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Hi.
Alderman Bibi.
Hi.
Alderman Santiago.
Hi.
Alderman Sheen.
Hi.
Alderman Hallit.
Hi.
Alderman Creto Munos.
Hi.
Alderman Demas.
Hi.
Alderman Smith.
Hi.
Alderman Switek.
Hi.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Hi.
Alderman Marano.
Hi.
Alderman Myers.
Hi.
Okay, that passes. Now we will consider item seven A. Um ordinance granting an amendment to special use permit for outside storage ancillary to permitted. Uh a permitted use at eight hundred West Washington Street. That is otherwise known as uh Frame Properties, what used to be the General Mills. Um factor. I actually have a question on this, and I don't know if somebody from um the committee can shed any light on it, but. Uh I was actually having a discussion with uh uh one of our local businesses today that is in that area. Uh the General Mills factory is, I believe, square footage wise, the largest facility in West Chicago. And is been vacant for.
Since two thousand seventeen.
Since two thousand seventeen. And I'm I'm wondering if we know if Frame has. Any plans to move that towards being something other than a very large. Vacant manufacturing facility with outdoor storage.
As far as I know, the manufacturing side of that, which is the. Um eastern part of that. Uh all of the equipment that used to be owned by General Mills to produce the products has been by large. Removed. Um and as far as I know, Frame has no intention of returning that to a manufacturing site. They are using the uh what used to be the warehousing portion. Uh of that side and for storage and that likes. So at this point. There has been no discussion as far as I'm aware of of that ever returning to be a manufactured side of it.
Okay, Alderman Marano.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, can I recognize someone from the audience?
Yes.
Did you want to say a few words? Yes, thank you.
I'm Dale Hammer Smith, never preserve Brain Industries.
Thank you for being here to be able to answer my questions.
There's a lot of moving parts going on at that facility. So the facility, of course, had been vacant for quite some time. Brain Industries purchased the uh property. Uh but the core business of Brain Industries is buying and selling packaging machinery. Uh we knew about the facility because it was part of the auction, which all the development leaving. Once we took possession of the building, there's uh multiple reasons why, in my opinion only. Uh General Mills did leave the facility. The east heart is very um, I would say by today's standards, non-food, to say the least. It also has a full basement underneath the whole thing. Multiple stories above, uh it was very specific use. What we did is Train Industries, when we purchased the property, we were very upfront with the intention of just filling the space with used machinery. Uh that's what we use it for. From the very beginning is just machines come in, machines come back out. What we did try to do and we have succeeded is we have divided the property from the east side, the west side through town road. Because the. In our opinion, Frame Industries, the bulk of the worth of that whole property is the west side with the two warehouses. The two warehouses total three hundred and fifty thousand square foot. And it's very open span. So it does lend itself to be able to be utilized for other things. What we did do is we created in the um. Our northwest corner, our packaging. So that's what you see when you come up and down the street. I actually started up the contract packaging division. I do work for Frame. Uh directly. So we have been running contract packaging over there. Our business, once again, is in Carroll Stream. We have been fairly successful. We have not been able to bring anything very large in. But we have as a suspenseful with our original uh requests for the outside storage. Uh with a shingle. Uh operation. So we did pallets of shingle in. We reprocess them and they go back out. And that was our first request to be able to. Actually have shingles sitting outside, which we were approved and we did do the privacy checks and all. We have entered with uh. Two very large companies trying to develop the east side of the street. The far east section of that property and facility is more of an open span. So we've tried and are still pursuing, trying to get uh actually chocolate line production over there. We actually have a. Five million dollar line set up. Uh not operational and actually had. Worked with the uh. Canadian um. Railroad. Uh utilizing spur again and doing other people for that. It is not a done deal, but we have very actively tried to keep. Bringing in more and more business. Um as you can all appreciate, not just the tax, but just the maintenance landscaping on property of. Just utilities because it has eight actual substations is very costly. So we are trying very hard to do something with the property that's constructive and useful for the city itself besides keep going.
Thank you. I I'll tell you what my concern and the reason why I was asking these. Uh I mean, we have a history in West Chicago like every place does and uh. You know, we are just dealing with the remediation of an industrial site that. Was used for a long time with outdoor storage and, you know, i- eventually closed down and then. We ended up kind of being saddled with this. Property that we then had to remediate and we are currently spending millions of dollars to remediate.
Yes.
And I I I guess my fear, you know, looking at it is, I don't want us to end up with this. Hulking. Building like you see in Gary, Indiana or something which, you know, just kind of deteriorates into. I- into being an eyesore and then somehow. You know, we end up ha- having to remediate it and having outdoor storage and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Any? Anything that you can tell me that might allay my fears?
So the uh request here for the increased storage, the um. To do a different type of storage, uh we've uh entered into an agreement with Tesla. And of course, everybody knows, so it's a big company. It's a multi-year agreement. And of course, everybody knows, so it's a big company, it's a multi-year agreement. Uh, the original idea was to, and Tesla is very open and wanting to do this, the east side of the building, they wanted a parking lot and they want. The office area, which is perfect for Frame because we want our storage, which we're utilizing. Um, we took the liberty of doing that, I did, I personally did not do the uh, proper communication with John and Kelly. And as a result, we need to move those cars quickly, so we put them on the west side, RFJ Packaging. Um, I do have occupancy for both sides of the street, but I do have a sandwich business of their contract packaging. It worked out good, they're leasing off the space within my facility and we're parking cars back there. Uh, we have already had the privacy funds put up. Um, to do everything we could for the aesthetics and to blend into the community. To answer your question, Tesla is very, very interested in expanding their operation, they want this to be a Midwest center of uh. Where the uh, rail is right down the street from us, literally, it's Tesla that came to us, which was a phenomenal thing for me personally. Uh, we did not have to go beat the bush for this, so. If we can get this, and I'm asking for consideration on that. Uh, to have the cars parked over on the west side where they are, we have the offices already that has been marked for quite some time now. Tesla is onsite every day of the week, uh, sometimes Saturday and Sunday, the truck traffic. It stays right on Town Road before the railroad tracks, which is four trucks, so we're not even a parent of the neighborhood whatsoever. Um, if we can get this to move forward, establish ourselves, prove ourselves. Tesla very much wants to continue the operation, expand this. And they're utilizing the parts of the property that Frame Industry doesn't get useful.
Thank you, one last question, as you know, that we are a community in crisis with the ICE operations. Today, there's a lot of fear in the community and every time there is a uh, law enforcement training. Process that happens there, I get calls of people who are afraid, what's going on there, is that something that will be continuing? If, if this new.
So I would assume that anything that I'm saying is a public statement here, especially in honor of all of you here. Um, if that is a concern. So what we did from the very beginning, and once again, I was a big part of this. I actually thought, because the city of West Chicago also has utilized the facility. Um, I thought that was very good as a community service to show what we can do, I mean, it's a small part in the big picture. But the fact that we're not going anywhere, but I say that openly to everyone here, if this is a concern. I've lived in West Chicago since nineteen eighty-one. My daughter was born, first daughter in nineteen eighty-four, and at that point I left Chemical Packaging and started working. With the Hispanic community for my first time and have never stopped. I openly say this, if this is a concern, I will stop it tomorrow. And I will hold myself personally responsible. Because the community, not only West Chicago, when children have gone to school, women, grand children are starting to fear. And the significant community has been a big part of this since immediately.
Thank you, any other questions? Appreciate you being here and being able to answer my questions.
Appreciate everyone here giving us consideration if you choose to do so, thank you.
And that last point, let's continue to communicate.
You uh, you, you all know where I work. Um, so Kelly and uh, John both uh, spent a long time with me for all the right reasons. Uh, any concerns, please, they can get ahold of me in a moment's notice and I will instantly sell.
And Dale, just one last question, what is your role specifically?
So my current role is a uh. I manage our three properties, we have the core businesses in Carroll Stream. Uh, where we have our actual office and that's the only place we do production as far as machinery. Uh, the business started in Addison, we still have a warehouse on the road there. And what I basically do is manage our property, manage our ongoing businesses, my part of Frame at this point is. Business development to continually bring something useful to the facility.
Thank you so much. Is there any discussion before we vote? Okay, let's um, did we? And I would entertain a motion, Alderman Stout? Second? Okay, but I, that was Alderman Switek, got that, uh, let's call the roll.
Alderman Stout?
Aye.
Alderman Switek?
Aye.
Alderman Beebe?
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia?
Aye.
Alderman Santiago?
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan?
Aye.
Alderman Hallett?
Aye.
Alderman Creto Munoz?
Aye.
Alderman Demas?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto?
Aye.
Alderman Morano?
Aye.
Alderman Myers?
Aye.
Okay, curious. And I do appreciate the fact that Frame Industries, if I understand correctly, is a basically still a family business that's uh. Uh, centered out of Carroll Stream and we, we do have a lot of. Uh, family businesses that, that have been around for a long time in West Chicago and uh, knowing that there's a commitment towards our community. Um, and it's not just a corporate conglomerate that could care less and your being here tonight makes a difference, so thank you.
Just one last thing, uh, since I have taken over the facility, we have had two very honest and strong. Uh, offers to purchase property, do other things with it, and we claim we will not sell that property, we will not buy the property. It is part of the overall family, um. Along with our Carroll Street facility, Addison has been in uh, on the books since the other. So, uh, we're not going.
Thank you. Okay, uh, that brings us to item seven J. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a downtown investment program grant with Jose Ospe Muñoz. At one sixteen Main Street, a discussion, yes, Alderman Morano?
So, and I apologize for pulling this, um, I just, I, I'm actually really excited that we're going to be doing something, updating downtown and. Um, it certainly some, some much needed areas for improvement, I appreciate so much, why not take the time to actually do it, so it's, it's great. Uh, my financial question was, what is the remaining amount in that fund because they're under a fee and pretty limited to begin with?
As I recall, it's about a hundred and forty-seven. Kelly's here, yeah. I'm guessing one forty-seven.
One hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is what was budgeted, um, with tonight's approval of the disbursement report that is. Gone down by about twenty-one hundred, twenty-two hundred dollars for a reimbursement from uh, last year. And so this, although the property would be eligible for seventy-five thousand dollars, they did expand their scope and they got up to seventy-three thousand, one hundred and four dollars. For their eligible grant, which is what is uh, up for consideration tonight, so we still do have a little extra and I. Anticipate that next month's first meeting, we will likely have another grant to bring it for the council to consider, which is exciting.
Keep bringing them.
Yeah.
This is money I'm actually excited about spending. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, let's entertain a motion. To. Adopt. Item seven J, yes, Alderman Myers, and is that a second Alderman Demas?
Yes.
Okay, let's call the roll.
Alderman Myers?
Aye.
Alderman Demas?
Aye.
Alderman Beebe?
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia?
Aye.
Alderman Santiago?
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan?
Aye.
Alderman Hallett?
Aye.
Alderman Creto Munoz?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Switek?
Aye.
Alderman Stout?
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto?
Aye.
Alderman Morano?
Aye.
That passed, moving right along to reports by committees, do we have any reports?
Nothing in the stadium.
Okay. Infrastructure. Okay. Look at us, we're just plowing right through, that brings us to twelve unfinished business, ordinance uh, number twenty-five zero zero. Oh, zero zero two nine, an ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service. Occupation tax for the city of West Chicago and to clarify. Um, this is not too. Are we wording that?
It wouldn't implement, but it would approve it for future reaffirmation by the council, you'd need an additional. Level of direction to actually send it to the state.
Okay. Alderman Morano?
I think the request was to remove the, the whole nineteen portion of that before bringing it back.
So if you read the.
And I think.
Ordinance, it's got some red light and then that changes.
I was reading off the agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, so. Here. Uh, so, so actually we should um. Make a motion in a second, then have a discussion, right, that's, that's, did that backwards last time, uh, let's uh, take a motion. Alderman Demas?
Yes, Your Honor, I would make a motion uh, to approve this with the revisions that we have before us for ordinance number twenty-five oh zero zero two nine.
Thank you, Alderman Demas is in her second, Alderman Hallett, now we can have discussion. Yeah, I think it is, yeah, thank you.
These are the sections that affect the title.
My copy doesn't have the crossing out because it's the signing copy, but um, if you are looking at it, um, on the first page, the. Uh, sixth whereas has um. Some cleanup language. And then on the second page. A little bit of cleanup language on the now therefore. And uh, then section five, where you get some of the crossouts. Um. Uh, shall file a certified copy and then. Um, we've removed the date on or before October first, twenty twenty-five, so it'll basically be held indefinitely. Until we give more direction and then section ten publication. Um, uh, we've removed the section that said the ordinance shall be in full force and effect after its passage uh, and publication. Alderman Myers?
Um. My question is uh. Can we verify that we can do this and also has anybody else done this? That we know of?
I will ask our corporate counsel.
So if the Department of Revenue doesn't receive it, they don't know they're collecting it, so. We can do that, it, so it's the filing that would trigger the collection. So yes, we can, we can take those actions, I don't know of anyone else that is doing it, most entities are just passing it and filing it now because they want the revenue center.
Yeah, I was, I was uh, I was surprised because when we initially had talked about this, is my impression that this was a. Use it or lose it, like either pass it or you could never pass it ever. And so this is like somewhere in between somehow, and so I just won't, I don't want to be surprised if next year we're like, yeah, we need to implement the grocery tax and we send in the file. Or and they're like, what are you talking about, can't do that. So that, that's my.
Any response?
No, we haven't found any prohibition against that.
Yep. All right, any other, other discussion? I've made my feelings about the grocery tax known, you know, I, I don't like it, but I, I think this was sort of a. A, a, a compromise agreement to kind of put it there in case we need it. And um. Obviously, we'll continue to have the budget discussion. So uh, there's no other discussion, let's uh. Let's call the roll.
Okay, Alderman Demas?
Aye.
Alderman Hallett? Alderman Beebe?
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia?
Aye.
Alderman Santiago?
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan?
Aye.
Alderman Creto Munoz?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Switek?
Aye.
Alderman Stout?
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto?
Last name.
Alderman Morano?
Aye.
Alderman Myers?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Item thirteen, uh, new business. Uh, just a discussion, possible action regarding uh, an elected city clerk. Uh, B, discussion, possible action to confirm uh, commission. Pointments will uh, take A uh, first and I'll just kind of set the table a little bit here, um, so we uh. Uh, we had a city clerk, uh, Nancy Smith, who passed away um, in twenty twenty-two. Um, and uh, after she um, passed, uh, we, as a city, rolled the responsibilities and authority of the city clerk. Into the city administrator position. At this point, we are in the process of working with uh, MTG to uh, MGT, uh, to. Uh, uh, to, to hire a new uh, city administrator and so it makes sense that if we were going to. Uh, change something, that this would be uh, a time to uh, do it and uh, I, at this point, I'm. Going to ask our corporate counsel to kind of explain some of the dynamics of um, not having a city clerk in a, in a town of our size.
Yes, so it's very unusual for a municipality of this size or even very small municipalities to not have. A city clerk, so I'm not sure what the motivation was originally by the council eliminating the city clerk. Um. Illinois has a very strong municipal clerks organization, the municipal clerks of Illinois, and they actually have classes. For clerks to become certified by uh, annual training, so it keeps them up to date on procedures like. Record keeping, inventory of records, preparation of minutes, a lot of times the clerk serves as the Freedom of Information Act, um. Officers for the municipalities, clerks also provide the um. Election official, local election official functions and. It, I, I only actually know of one other community that merged their record keeping functions into the manager's office and I. Kind of felt that they had problems there here, as you know, there have been some instances, we've been looking for records that we couldn't find. And um, to have that added burden on a municipal manager seems extreme to me when it's. Really easy to have a clerk either elected or appointed to serve in those functions, either full-time or part-time, depending on what your needs are. Now. Some municipalities, that, there's a host of different ways that communities treat their municipal clerks, some of them. Rely very strongly on the clerk, uh, usually in smaller communities to kind of run day-to-day operations, overseeing. Personnel serving as the collector, I don't think you would need a clerk necessarily to do that here. Um, but other communities just defer other um, administrative tasks to the office of the clerk, like um. Supplementing the police records maintenance or collecting parking fees or engaging in um, some water department collection functions, things like that. So I would strongly consider, strongly urge you to consider bringing back that position. Um, or at least I'd like to know what, I mean, if it was just that, people were very sad about that and, and thought that the manager could take it on, but it's a. You, you have, the, the flip side of it is that you have a lot of responsibilities that you place on your administrator already. And now you have someone who's your assistant also serving as administrator and it's just, it's very. Challenging to. Perform kind of the clerical functions, even, I can't even imagine the preparation of the minutes, that, I, I think that alone is just. It, it's a task that it makes sense to have somebody else designated that, now you indicated that you save money for court reporters. Were, the court reporters actually preparing the minutes in the past or? No, these were specific to um, planning and zoning hearings. Oh, okay. And it was so that we would have a transcript if anyone were to request, but since we've switched to the owl devices, we actually get.
We actually get more accurate records through these reportings than we were getting through the court reporter. And so it streamlined the process plus the court reporter fees then got pushed back onto the applicant. So it makes it a more business friendly approach for the app.
Okay. So if the council is interested in bringing back clerk position, you should do it prior to the twenty twenty seven elections unless you want to have an appointed clerk instead of an elected clerk. If you want to amend the ordinance or pass such an ordinance, it would have to pass by a two thirds vote of the corporate authorities.
I would also suggest that there's a potential, I said, we'll go to you, Alderman Marano, in just a second. Just a, you know, potential. Separation of powers issues as well when it, when it's all consolidated. Under the city administrator who is appointed by the mayor, then essentially you have someone who is appointed by the mayor. Looking at the, um, you know, deciding whether to accept. Election petitions and those kinds of things as well, uh, which I think is, is problematic in my mind. We also had, and I don't know if this. This was the other part of what we, we talked about, the, the, our city administrator had also become the auditor of whistleblower complaints. And in that same vein, um, you know, i- it, that does not make sense to me for the. Person whose decisions might be the ones. That the whistleblower is, is, is trying to bring up for the city administrator to be the one. Who is considering those whistleblower complaints. And so it, it's also in addition, just additional burden. And like, yeah, we're already like, and, and office staff is really burdened with the FOIA requests and so forth. It's also to my mind, uh, a, a safeguard. And, and just another way of, of, of separating powers so that. There's no one person that wields too much power and has the ability to. To take advantage of that power. Alderman Marano.
Well, you know, how much money are we dedicated this new position that we've dedicated?
I believe the city clerk in the past was at six thousand.
I would have to check our records. That was before my time.
Alderman Demus.
And I, I guess the salary would be based on full time, part time, I assume, right? And I believe Ms. Smith was part time.
Yeah, I mean. I'm, somebody can check me, but I'm pretty sure it was six thousand and I don't think we've changed. Do you think it counted?
I think it was, but again, I'm.
Okay, let's say six to ten. Say it was six to ten and I don't think we've changed salaries for elected officials if I am not mistaken and quite some time. We all do this for the money, just so. That's a, that's irony. That's sarcasm.
Yeah.
Let the record show that was a joke. Alderman Myers.
Uh, I guess my, I'm a little skeptical if we can find somebody to do all of those things that you just mentioned for. And Ryan.
Yeah, I would be skeptical that we could find somebody to fill your position for fifty bucks and.
Maybe forty.
Yeah, I mean, it is a, that. It is an elected position and, and that is our system that we rely on is. I mean, basically, we're trusting that people who are in our position are going to put in more work than what we're paying them for. Right? I mean. If you work out the hourly of what we're making. I don't think you would want us putting in those hours. Yes, Alderman Demus.
I just. Real quick, so this would be, this would be a position that could be appointed. But would the appointment be like, that could be like more of an immediate thing? And then when the elections come around, then that would be running for that position. I'm just trying to get verification.
Well, you would usually pick whether or not you're going to have a clerk elected or appointed. I guess what you could do, I'd have to look. There's a provision like if you're creating or well, actually, if you're. Ending the term of elected official, yes, the end of a specified term, but if you're creating it, I wonder if you could create an appointed. Clerk position now and then have that person like change it into an elected position. I'd have to look at it. I don't know that offhand.
I don't agree with this position, but I think for the, the sake of. Discussion, it would be helpful for Ms. Messino to also kind of. Bring up your perspective on the.
So I have worked in other communities previously and one of them had an elected clerk. And when you do have an elected person, you hope that you get people that are dedicated and interested in doing the work. We had an experience with someone who maybe started off that way, but eventually grew frustrated with the work and. It resulted in significant delays in items being signed that needed to be signed. Brought to the county that needed to be brought to the county and properly filed. And the responsibilities started becoming shifted back towards staff, taking meeting minutes, having to drive over and file items. But we also ran into the challenge that staff members no longer had the authority to do certain things. And we're wholly dependent on this person who chose to go out of town on vacation and. Eventually just abandoned their position. We were in the position that the mayor was able to appoint a clerk on a temporary basis. That person. Came in and was very dedicated. That person subsequently won election to office and. Did all of the work very thoroughly, took all of the classes and took the position very seriously. But it is an example of a risk that you do run with any elected official, but one that you specifically need. A decent amount of paperwork related to, it, it could be a challenge. There's no vetting process. We don't get to say, oh, wow, you're. Not doing this well. Goodbye. They are our person until they leave or they are elected out of office.
And I respect your thinking, which is why I think you should consider. Uh, but I don't agree. Uh, that, well, I mean, it, to be fair, it's just like a good discussion that we're having, but. So that the, the concept was maybe by. Point, having an appointed one that you can vet that person better. I, I would point out, but you've acknowledged that. That risk exists in any of our elected officials. You could get a bad mayor. Maybe you could get a bad mayor, in which case you will, that's, that's our system. I mean, that's the system we're stuck with. You got to realize somebody else. And. I, I don't think that I should have the power to appoint that person because it puts too much power in my head. Because that person would be looking at my election. Uh, petition and my opponent's election petitions and saying which one gets accepted and which one doesn't. Yes, just some follow up questions. Let's say we go with this route, whatever that looks like with a city clerk, but the city, you, you had stated that city clerk has to have certification first of all. Is that correct?
It does not have to have, but the, the municipal clerks of Illinois. Have a very robust educational program, so they could obtain a certification over a couple of years to become like a. Master certified municipal clerk and, and they also have a very.
We have to give them a raise then?
No, and I think it costs like twenty five dollars for them to get the certification. But they, the other thing is they have this thing called the Trump line, so a lot of times new clerks will come in and they'll say, oh, how do I do this? And then you get four hundred responses from all the other clerks and how they do that, so.
I guess then my follow up question would be. Can you specify then the responsibilities of the city clerk? That it's not just a broad. And say, for instance, there you had some concerns with the previous city clerk. If those responsibilities were not on their plate, then it would be. I, I'm just asking you questions.
You mean each individual person who.
So for instance.
Comes in or do you mean the position?
The position at all, yeah. So you look at the position and you say, these are things that I'm concerned with that if somebody comes in and they are. Negligent and following through with something that would really detrimentally hurt the city. You eliminate that off their responsibilities. I'm, I'm just trying to get a general idea.
Well, the statute says what clerks are required to do by law. Now, if you have one that wasn't performing their duties that they were required by law to do. I mean, it does happen sometimes, not a lot, but it, I, I, I think what you would do if you're going to then. Create the position, we could say this, we could just do a sheet, like this is what required, what clerks are required to do by law. We expect our clerk will also do the following. We think it will take so many hours a week, almost like a job description. Some people know what they're setting up for, what the expectations are.
Right, in Illinois, are you allowed to put a recall thing in?
Yes, we learn from the village of Dalton. No. Or if you can, no one's here, I'm going to do it, yes.
Interesting, yeah. Yes, Alderman Stout.
So if we do create this position, given that it is, we are elected official, a position. And our next election is not for. Two twenty seven, that position would remain unfilled until.
Well, the elected position would be unfilled until then. I will look and see if there's a way you could create an appointed position.
But if the mayor said he's uncomfortable making that appointment due to factors of.
I would, I would think that we, we would remain in our, we would just write it so that it is implemented once we elect one. I, I would think we would probably, I mean, it seems like you could go either way, but we could. Probably write it so that it remains with the city administrator until the election.
Yeah, I like the, the idea of an elected city clerk, but and if we have one that didn't want to do his or her job, is there impeachment? I mean, you can impeach just about anybody.
Well, they don't want to do their job. A lot of times you just. A- ask them if they'll resign and if they really don't want to do their job, there's fine. Now, sometimes there's the bad apple that wants to collect a paycheck for doing nothing. That is, it seems to be very rare, but it does happen. It's Illinois, right? So you can go to the state's attorney's office and. Pursue an action in Colorado to remove them or, I, I mean, it's a very. Rare. Thing that the clerks would want to seek out a position and not perform it.
So there is some legal avenue where you could see if they have someone.
Right, or to file lawsuit to compel them or perform their duties and there's, yeah.
Yes.
Who would manage this person?
The public.
Themselves, right?
As, as an elected official, they would be accountable to the, to the public.
What if we didn't make it an elected? What if the city council hired them?
Well, that's, that's, that goes back to the same scenario that I didn't like is that the separation of powers, then it's, then it's more power for the city council. So I like having a third, I like having a third leg of the stool.
I mean, really, right now you have an employee performing functions and I mean tragically, we have an employee playing many, many different roles right now. Right? So that will help once we get another city administrator position, but you could hire a staff person. To assist with the duties of your staff all the time. But who was your last city clerk accountable for? Or two, probably no, no, as elected officials.
Yeah, she's an elected official, yes. I mean, that's what an elected official is, is they, they report directly to the people and that's kind of. Our system. Yes, Alderman Stout.
Prior to Nancy Smith passing away, so when there were duties that she was not able to perform. Valeria took on the position of deputy. City clerk and she performed a lot of the things that were maybe not done. Uh, that Nancy was to do either due to time restraints or, you know, whatever, so. We did have a city person that was doing. Items. So there was.
I, I, I am assuming that that would continue to. Be the case in the same sense that I by city code. Am chief executive officer, but our system, the day to day operations. Are overseen by the city administrator in the same sense, I, I, I would assume that a city clerk. That would, they would be responsible. They would be the person who is ultimately. Responsible, but we could continue to have city staff carrying out certain functions. Uh, on their orders and, 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 yeah, I mean, I, I would assume also if there's like. Paperwork that needs to be signed in a timely way or something that we would be able to have. Some line of.
Yeah, you can also authorize a deputy clerk. Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Do you guys? Want to noodle on that for a, a few weeks and come back to it or do you want to vote on it? Alderman Marano.
I saw that you're just looking for a direction. This mark, right?
Yeah, so, so, so it said consideration and possible action. So those are two, are two possible things. We can. Just, and my assumption is that we would just talk about it because it's a new concept and that we would come back to it in a future meeting. Because we would have to write out the, 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 the code and so forth. Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, again, it seems like based on the conversation that. Many of us are kind of leaning towards the, the idea of having it as an elected position that you come available in twenty twenty seven. Um, that said, I mean, if we could. Have staff maybe put something together that.
Write it up.
Obviously that we didn't, I think that would be a good direction.
Yeah. Um, do we just informally ask you to do that or do we need to, I mean?
And we, I mean, we pray there's no, maybe so.
Okay. Whoever wants them, the staff to, to, to write it up, thumbs up, anybody thumbs down, okay, all right. All right. Alderman Myers.
Also for a second to vote about. Are you interested in, in pursuing an appointment until twenty twenty seven, seeing as thousands, we're saying that there's a lot of stuff that needs to get done.
I have to see if it's even possible.
Yeah, so would, and so like, come back to us with what are, what are options for the short term until the election? Thank you. I thought you were trying to second the thumb and then like, you know. Uh, all right. Can, 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 um, can we add in that like? I, I don't know if the, the whistleblower is automatically part of the city clerk or that would probably be something separate. So can, can city staff kind of give us options for? Some combination of city staff and, and answer link, give us what our options would be for the whistleblower as well, please. Sure, is that? Good. All right. Commission appointments. So as I mentioned. Alderman Bibi and Alderman Myers and I got together and. Had some good conversation. We're not ready to bring all of our appointments. Tonight, but we have, we have two that we wanted to go ahead and bring for the. Downtown revitalization commission and. Those, those two are the ones that were in your, your packet. Dave Sabathini, who I know is here at some point, but, uh, hey, he's still here. All right. Um, I think most of you are familiar with him, but. You know, we, we, he could, he could, he could, uh, we have. You know, certain allotment of, of seats on that committee that are for residents or for business or for nonprofits. So he could, he could, we could shuffle him around wherever we need him, I think, but. He, he, he is definitely part of the business community and, and also a resident, so he would be filling one of those roles. And. Does anyone have any questions or? I mean, he's here. If you want to, we can give him the third degree, call him up here and, you know.
Think his reputation speaks for it.
Okay. Alderman Myers.
You know, Mr. Sabathini, are you going to field their ten? I know you're a very busy man.
Well, not the first one because it's in like the twenty third and I'll be in Greece, but subsequent meetings, the answer would be yes.
Oh, it's a different meeting.
Okay, so then you're good.
I, yeah, I can do that, yeah.
Or you bring us all to Greece.
Yeah, there we go, there we go. Any other questions there? Okay, so. Uh, if. I would entertain a motion to confirm, Mr. Sabathini. Uh, Alderman Myers was the first and second, I believe, was Alderman Stout. You guys got to be quicker. Sorry, she'll get you to it.
This, right, carry on?
Yeah.
Voice vote, voice vote?
Yeah, voice vote, all in favor? Post? Okay, I read the room cor- read the room correctly. I, I thought. Okay, I read the room cor- read the room correctly. I I thought we could get away with the voice vote there and not have any problems. Um, uh, the the other um uh that we wanted to bring tonight um is Sarah Phelan. And again, a known quantity in in West Chicago, our resident historian and uh very um very engaged person uh in our in our community, in the Latino community. Uh, it, she um runs our city museum. Uh, she co-founded uh People Made Visible. Um, she's an attorney. What else does she do? She does a lot of things, so. Um, uh, I don't believe Ms. Phelan is here this evening, but um does anyone have any questions uh about Ms. Phelan, and and she would probably probably be filling the um not for profit, but she could also fill fill a resident um uh slot. Yes.
Yeah, I think she knows the community very well, like, I mean, by like the people and like um the infrastructure and things, I think it's a good issue for the community.
Yeah. Yes.
I have known her for quite some time, and she is a very knowledgeable person about our community, the the community here in West Chicago. Um, about history, about our history, there's things, like you knew that, I didn't. Um, it's it's a tremendous lady, I I strongly
If you haven't been to one of her presentations on excuse me, on West Chicago history, um make a point to to be at one, because they're very interesting. Okay? Um, if there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion. Alderman Demas, second Alderman Smith. Uh, you're quicker that time, you'd be all in favor? Opposed? That passes as well. And let's see here. Yeah, um, we'll we'll be bringing a bunch more commission for next time. I just I want to get you guys the um the names and stuff ahead of time so you have a chance to kind of process, so that's, otherwise we'd be bringing like thirteen more people tonight, so. Um, uh, uh, I think we'll move on from there. Um. But be ready for more next time. Uh. Correspondents and announcements, were there already, huh? Uh, upcoming meetings, you can read that, but October second, infrastructure, October sixth, finance, October thirteenth, development committee. Um, we had um a great Mexican Independence Day festival uh on Sunday. It was today was such a hard day and it followed right on what was such, I think, a wonderful day in our community, and I know many of you were there and uh and and took part in it. Uh, thank you for, I, what I want to say about it is that it it's pretty incredible how like our community came together to 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 pull that off in a in a what is a very short time period for an event of that scope, and we had multiple community organizations Desper Despertar Latino, I think I need a water, um Despertar Latino, um Casa Michoacan. Uh, We Go For Kids, thank you so much, um District ninety four, District thirty three, and um and our city staff did an awesome job too, but like the this one was so like dependent on volunteer labor that um I just
Thank you for all of the
It's really
Here, that was wonderful.
Really, really cool, so that's not to take away from the hard work that the staff did, but I mean, we we could not have done it without the community, um just volunteering so much time and and effort and um and everything else, so great job with that, West Chicago. Um, we are looking forward to some really exciting celebrations um next year. Uh, we have the Fourth of July, you guys know what it is, it's our, how do we say it, our Bai Kin uh
Two hundred fifty years.
Two hundred and fif- there's a word for it, we're gonna figure it out, but um i- 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 yeah, it's like half of five hundred, our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary as a country. And so um we're looking forward to a big celebration and um uh parade. And uh I'm I'm gonna be pushing for that parade every every step of the way, and then uh next year, um we're hoping um uh Chief Florina, this is no surprise, Chief Florina, I haven't talked about it a long time. Uh, and next year, we'd love to get a parade on our uh on our Mexican Independence Day celebration as well. You know, I'm not gonna make a big speech here, but there there is so much similarity between the Mexican Declaration of Independence uh which was forty one years later than the American Declaration of Independence and which borrowed from both the American and the French declarations of independence, but it was really part of the same movement um in 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 the new world, and um there was a a real desire uh to uh uh to promote the cause of 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 freedom and liberty and 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 justice, and it is an ongoing story, right, that we're still fighting for. But um uh but but there's some really cool history um with both with both those two events and the fact that we can celebrate Mexican Independence Day as Americans um demonstrates the strength of our culture, that we have all these different backgrounds, West Chicago in particular, we've got the, you know, waves of Irish and German immigration coming on the railroads and then the first wave of Mexican immigration, the nineteen aughts and tens, and then sadly, a a story, a a an episode of our history that is important to remember right now. Um, the Great Depression hit in nineteen twenty nine, and people were looking for somebody to blame for their economic woes. And of course, we blamed the immigrants, and we had what is sadly known as Operation Wetback, that's what it was called. Uh, where there were um over six hundred thousand Mexicans deported during that time, and later studies showed that more than half of them were uh were legal citizens of the US that were deported um during the decade of the the Great Depression. Uh, West Chicago was hit very specifically by that. We had a, we had a a a thriving boxcar community. Um, thriving as, and it would have been incredibly difficult living in a boxcar year round, but there were, there were many of many people in a a thriving community, and um by the time that purge was done, we only had two Mexican families left in West Chicago. And that is something for us to remember right now. Uh, some of them were deported, some of them just fled because they were getting caught up in these kind of indiscriminate sweeps. And it wasn't until the sixties and the Campbell's uh soup, um mushroom factory and so forth, that um there was a second major wave of 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 immigration from Mexico that kind of led to the community that we are today, and so you've got that that Irish thread and German thread and Mexican thread, and it's all related to the railroads, and it's a fascinating heritage that we should be very proud of. And it's on the backs and the strength of those immigrant communities that this town became what it is. And I think that it's very important to remember that, you know, when we cross the threshold of thirty percent Latino around nineteen ninety, most communities, when they cross that threshold, what happens? They go way past it and they become vast majority of the minority. I look around at, you know, um all these cities that experienced white flight during that time period. It says something that West Chicago actually maintained a balanced fifty fifty. And that doesn't mean that we have it all together, but it does speak to the fact that people chose to live together. And let's build on that. Today was an extremely hard day. Um. There were many tears. Um.
Oh, yeah.
The the, like I said early on, you know, um hearing about kids having panic attacks and a- and and interestingly, they're not all Latino kids. My wife's a teacher. I mean, she was telling me about a third grade girl who her parents are just as white as me, and she was having a panic attack about, you know, people coming and taking her away. So there's a lot of fear. A- a- and it's it's based on something very real. We had fifteen of our residents that were that were taken away today and probably won't be back. And um these are not people that had um criminal that were taken away based on criminal records. You know, they're they're individuals that each had their own story and their own families and and so forth, so just just keep that in mind. Um, you know, we all have these different backgrounds, but our community is hurting right now, like in a in a really significant way. So it's a really important time for us to come together and support each other and um, you know, our 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 country is is wrestling through what I hope is a temporary uh time of 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 strife and you know, that that promise of you know, that we that we that we uh that we speak of every time we say the pledge and every time we sing the national anthem, we we talk about the home of of the free, we talk about liberty and justice for all, and that is that is real. There is liberty, there is justice that we experience and are very thankful for. It's a blessing in this country, but it's also aspirational because many times it's failed. Um, and so I I I just um want to encourage us, I I feel that in times like this, it's so intimidating to think about all the problems in the nation. But it's easier to think about how you can influence and impact people on a local level. So like, we don't need to go to, I mean, maybe somebody, this is what you're called to do, go to Washington DC and whatever, but we don't all need to do that, but maybe get to know a neighbor that comes from a different background than you and look for ways that you can just be supportive of them. And um I think it's a lot easier for us to get our minds, to wrap our minds around how we can bring change to a local municipal government than to the nation. But it starts with this, this is the base. And um and and so uh today was a really hard day, but I also saw some wonderful things out there, neighbors supporting neighbors, so. I personally am gonna be praying for the families of the fifteen that were taken away today. I mean, that's a huge loss in our community. They have to lose fifteen people in one day. And um it's it's traumatic. So uh and 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 what what gives people fear is that there's no guarantee that it will happen again tomorrow morning. So, um sobering, but um those are my comments today because today is uh sobering day. Um, with that said, we are going to um we are gonna have a, I I I think and hope, a somewhat brief executive session. Um, but I would entertain a motion to adjourn into your, is it adjournment to recess to uh whatever we do
To go into a session.
To go into closed session.
But we need to specify the reasons.
And and the reasons, yes. Um, so we're gonna be talking about um uh a personnel matter um that is a legitimate closed session item. And uh then we'll be talking about um litigation. That's the greenhouse, right? Is that what we're
That was just there if
That's just there for me, okay, maybe we
It was a litigation.
Oh, okay, all right. Just so you guys know, last time they talked about the greenhouse, like I left for that part because I'm, you know, firewalling myself from those discussions, but uh so litigation, if that personnel
Needed it, that's all the
Discussion goes into litigation, that's that's the, that's when you'd be, that's what we'll be talking about. So that's what we're supposed to do when we go into closed session, is tell you guys why we're going into closed session. And then just so you know, in um eighteen months? Uh, is that the, is that the um limit, or eh eh we 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 come back and we look at the closed session minutes and we can
It's every six months.
Every six months. We can at that point choose to declassify those things if they no longer need to be um confidential. So. I would entertain that motion. Alderman Myers?
I moved.
Sorry, and we have a second? Yes, Alderman Swat, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
opposed? unanimous, thank you guys. Oh. Get the bang, the gavel.